We have called the City Council Caucus for 2013, 2016. We have one public hearing this evening. Would you please read?
Public hearing number one regarding multi-year dog licenses.
And under original consideration, we have one. Would you please read?
I have number one, the final consideration. North to Menchey, 183, the city of Schenectady relates nuisance properties.
Madam President?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make an amendment from the floor regarding this proposal here. It's section 183-18 and it's paragraph D. And I guess our mic's not working, so I'll just talk a little bit louder. And we just want to change the very first sentence to read, "Nothing in this ordinance is meant for people with mental illness," as opposed to what we have written down of the ability of people with disabilities. Oh, I'm sorry. We have it. Yes. So again, it's going to be to change it from people with mental illness to read to apparent ability of people with disabilities.
Okay. So I'll ask for a motion to move back to the agenda.
Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Palamene. All those in favor, aye. Thank you. Under original consideration, we have 24 items this evening. Agenda item number two, if the clerk would please read.
Agenda item number two, under original consideration. An ordinance re-appropriating the 2016 budget amortizing a portion of the police-fire retirement payment and adjust ERS retirement loan balance.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of 24 million aggregate principal serial bonds of the city of Schenectady, New York to finance construction and reconstruction of improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and construction of a new force main.
Without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution declaring the proposed construction and reconstruction of improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and construction of a new force main is a type-two action and not subject to review under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of audit results for fiscal year 2015 for the city of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution accepting 310 Green Street from Sura and authorizing the transfer to the Capital Region Land Bank.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 866 Eastern Avenue to Capital Region Land Bank.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot behind 949 State Street, SBL 49.34-3-39.1.
I was very excited about this one. Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Jumped the gun there. Okay, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the sale of 455 Hewlett Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the sale of 807 Craig Street.
And that was also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the sale of 38 Wiley Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the sale of 409 Schenectady Street.
And discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the sale of 242 Division Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the sale of 921 Stanley Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1543 Foster Avenue.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the sale of 128 High Avenue.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1815 Gilderland Avenue in lieu of 1819 Gilderland Avenue.
That was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 18.
Item number 18, a resolution calling for a 30-day moratorium on issuance of taxi licenses.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 19.
Item number 19, a resolution, SMHA and CSEA 1037B, management personnel compensation.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 20.
Item number 20, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 603 to Cornell's in Little Italy.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 21.
Item number 21, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 605 to Roy Vincent.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 22.
Item number 22, a resolution approving the mayor's appointments to the civilian police review board.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 23.
Item number 23, a resolution authorizing the purchase of council video equipment.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 24.
Item number 24, a resolution of support of the Gender Expression Nondiscrimination Act.
This item will be taken out of order and Ms. Porterfield will present. Item number 25.
Item number 25, a resolution recognizing the actions of patrolman Patrick Irwin.
And this item will also be taken out of order. I will present this item. One additional item for original consideration to be moved to the council agenda, item number 25A, if the clerk would please read.
Item number 25A, a resolution recognizing Diane Wilkinson, Capital Region's Administrator of the Year.
And I'll ask for a motion to place item 25A on the council agenda, moved by Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor, aye. And item number 25A will be taken out of order and I will ask Mr. Kozier to present. If there's nothing else to come before the city council caucus meeting, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Palamene. All those in favor, aye. Were adjourned. And I will now call the city council meeting to order for Monday, June 13, 2016. I will ask you to rise and pause for a moment of silence for all of the victims of the Orlando tragedy, their family, and their friends. Reverend Sarah Barron from the First United Methodist Church of Schenectady will offer our invocation this evening. Holy One, God of love, we gather today with hearts full of sadness. We are profoundly aware of the brokenness of the world. We gather with humility and confession, knowing that we have not done all that we can to keep your people safe. We gather in horror, aware of the ways that humans are capable of harming other humans. In this city of Schenectady, in upstate New York tonight, we send our love to Orlando, Florida, to the LGBTQI community around the world who are now more afraid for their safety, to communities of color who disproportionately experience the violence of our society, to all those who are grieving, and all who are injured in body or spirit. Acknowledging the great loss we faced yesterday as a nation and a world, we come to this meeting tonight hoping to bring more peace, more joy, and more justice into our city that we might participate with you in creating a more beautiful and loving city that will be a blessing to your world. May it be so. I will ask the Fitzgeralds to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Kozier?
Here.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari is excused. Mr. Palamene?
Here.
Mr. Riggi?
Here.
Mr. Mootivaren is excused. Ms. Perazzo?
Present.
We have three out-of-order resolutions this evening, but prior to presenting those, we have just a wonderful treat. We have Mr. Peter Fitzgerald here, and he has recently won the seventh Jack Stone Award for New Music. He's a first-year music student at SCCC and began composing at the age of 17. He now has 47 arrangements and 80 compositions. He is here to perform this winning, his winning piece, The Irish Tango. And I would like to tell you, Mr. Fitzgerald, I feel like I have some stake in the game here because a very long time ago, I owned a restaurant, and my food made your parents so happy that your dad proposed to your mom in my restaurant. So I feel like I have some personal responsibility in your success. Bravo.
I wanted to thank Tom McFarlane for asking me to play musicians here, and I'd also like to thank Henry Mark Schwartz and Jim Mac for performing this piece. I'd also like to thank at Schenectady County Community College, Mr. Brett Weary and Dr. Allison Kaiser for helping me along with the process of composing this piece and also for making me aware. And last but not least, if you want to hear some more of my music, this Wednesday night at Schenectady High School, three students, Michael Glances, Ben Ward, and James Blanchfield, they all got together this year and created a movie, and I was asked to compose the score for the movie. So at 7:00 PM this Wednesday, you can see a wonderful film, The Raven Himself.
The first of our ceremonial resolutions this evening offers support of the Gender Expression Nondiscrimination Act. This is something that the council had on the agenda prior to yesterday's tragedy, or the tragedy on June 12th, and it could never be more important today that we show support in this area. The Pride Center was going to be here to accept the resolution today, but unfortunately, they are showing support to the family of a young transgender man who took his own life in the wake of the tragedies. So if anyone thinks this isn't really important, this is really important. So I will call on Ms. Porterfield to present the resolution. Angelica Morris from the Schenectady County Human Rights Commission will accept the resolution, and then we will be sending it on to the state. Madam President? You have the floor.
A resolution in support of the Gender Expression Nondiscrimination Act, whereas the New York State Human Rights Law does not currently list gender expression as an explicitly protected class, and whereas on May 9, 2016, the New York State Assembly passed the Gender Expression Nondiscrimination Act, a bill that seeks to extend basic human rights protection by including gender identity and expression as a protected class under the New York State Human Rights Law. And whereas this is the ninth consecutive year that said bill has passed in the Assembly with the eight prior attempts resulting in little to no action in the state senate. And whereas in 2015, as part of his executive powers, Governor Andrew Cuomo took a series of executive actions, including an explicit ban on the harassment and discrimination against persons who identify as transgender. And whereas the city council recognizes the importance of diversity, equality, and basic human rights protections for all its residents. And whereas the city also recognizes the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender pride month, and is proud to host the fifth annual, the fifth annual Schenectady Pride event on June 18 in downtown Schenectady. Now, therefore be resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to express their support of the passage into law of the Gender Expression Nondiscrimination Act and to celebrate the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender pride month. Madam President, I'd like to move the resolution.
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Kozier. All those in favor, aye.
I just want to say thank you to the council, to the council, the mayor, Councilman Porterfield for presenting this on behalf of human rights, and I am humbled to receive this on behalf of the Pride Center. And I want to say thank you again to the city council and to all the community who supported us downstairs an hour ago for a community prayer vigil that we held in solidarity of our brothers and sisters who were victims in the Orlando shooting. And so I just want to say, continue to show your labor of love, compassion, and unity during this time of tragedy and turmoil, but yet let us all come together in unity besides everything that's going on because everybody's rights are respected and equal. And let us come together during this time to work together to move the city and the county forward so our kids and our families can be in a better place. Not saying it's not better, but we can do much improvements definitely in the areas of human rights and also rights for our LGBTQ community members, family, and friends. So thank you.
Our second resolution tonight honors patrolman Patrick Irwin, and I will ask Mr. Kozier to come up and assume the chair as I present this resolution. Councilmember?
Yes, Council President Perazzo may have the floor.
Thank you. In light of the recent events in Orlando, it seems even more fitting to recognize the challenging work that our protectors face. Once trained to be a first responder, I'm not sure you can ever be again off-duty as patrolman Irwin's recent actions emphasize. I've been told that he would rather not be recognized for this selfless act, and that is all the more reason to take time to recognize the heroes that walk among us. I'll ask patrolman Irwin to accept this recognition, if not for himself, for all of our officers who do brave things without thinking twice. And although you may or may not consider yourself a hero, I know one young lady and her family who very much think you are. This is a resolution recognizing the actions of patrolman Patrick Irwin, whereas on May 24, 2016, patrolman Patrick Irwin was shopping at Stewart's in Rexford, I heard, was it chicken corned-up blue sandwich? Yes. When he heard the calls for help. And whereas patrolman Irwin saw a female shopper in dress and immediately jumped into action. And whereas drawing upon his experience and training, administered chest compressions until the woman's pulse was restored. And whereas he continued to care for the woman until paramedics arrived, which ensured her survival. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the courage of patrolman Patrick Irwin and thank him for his dedication and service. Mr. Kozier, I move this.
Moved by Council President Perazzo, seconded by Councilman Riggi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. This one you don't know about, Patrick. I received a letter from the Clifton Park AF Moon Emergency Corps from their executive director, a gentleman by the name of Alan Bell. He writes to me, "Dear Commissioner Bennett, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the off-duty actions of Officer Patrick Irwin on May 24, 2016 at Stewart's in Rexford. The Clifton Park AF Moon Emergency Corps was activated for an overdose call. The ambulance responded and was on scene within four minutes. When the crew arrived, they found an unresponsive female in cardiac arrest. They further found Officer Irwin performing CPR. It was the initial reaction to the incident, followed by the actions of Officer Irwin that were pivotal in saving the patient's life. Officer Irwin, even while off-duty, came to the aid of an individual in need. Please find the enclosed certificate of appreciation and please pass it along with our appreciation for a job very well done. Sincerely, Alan Bell, Executive Director." Congratulations.
ask Mr. Kozier to present.
Ms. Wilkinson, and anybody else from the Board of Education, any administrators want to come forward as well? Spazer? No? They're all afraid. And let me just add, Peter Fitzgerald was a, is a graduate of Schenectady High School last year's class, correct? And we're very proud of him, so just another fine student we have. Madam President, if I may?
You have the floor.
Resolution honoring Diane Wilkinson, whereas Diane Wilkinson began her teaching career as a middle school technology teacher in 1991. And whereas she was named principal, this time at the Career and Leadership Academy in 2010. And whereas Schenectady School Superintendent Larry Spring calls her a garden of equity. And whereas she is driven by her desire to strengthen the system, build bridges, and support every student who attends Schenectady High School. And whereas students, parents, and faculty have applauded her text the principal. I remember when you came out with that, that's a great idea. Which invites students and parents to text any questions, comments, or concerns directly to her. And whereas members of her administrative team call her a dynamic and forward-thinking principal. And whereas Schenectady High School students' scores have improved on the U.S. History and English Language Arts tests. And whereas enrollment in the International Baccalaureate Program and the National Honor Society have increased. And whereas Diane Wilkinson was recently named the Capital Region Outstanding Administrator of the Year by the Empire State Supervisors and Administrators Association. Now, therefore be resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and their city council do hereby pause in our deliberations to congratulate Diane Wilkinson on the occasion of her being named as Capital Region Outstanding Administrator of the Year. Congratulations. I move this, Madam President?
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor, aye.
Just a few thank yous. First, a big thank you to the city council for honoring me with this. I am humbled, not only in the award, but this proclamation, as well as sharing the floor with Officer Irwin and Angelique in presenting, sharing this with you on this day. Certainly, I am here with a heavy heart after hearing some of the news of Orlando. And when we think about our kids and how much we care and what we do for them on a daily basis and the efforts, it really comes as such a community. I live two blocks from Schenectady High School, and I love Schenectady. I love Schenectady High School, and I love our kids. And the kids know when you love them, and when you have a community that supports them and are heroes and fights for their rights and cares for them on a daily basis, we can do some pretty incredible things. So I thank the teachers, I thank the support of the superintendent and the school board and the district administration who support me to do the best that I can to give the kids as much as they possibly need. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, as stated, we have one public hearing this evening. It's regarding multi-year dog licenses. I have two people signed up to speak, and the first is Chuck Thorne.
Good evening, Madam President. Councilmembers, Commissioner Bennett, my name is Chuck Thorne, and I'm the city clerk. Currently, dog licenses are valid for one year. One of the purposes of a license is to ensure that dogs have current rabies vaccination. Rabies vaccinations, however, can be valid for up to three years. What we are proposing is extending the term of the license for up to three consecutive years dependent on the rabies vaccination date, expiration date, I'm sorry. There will be no change in the annual... date, expiration date, I'm sorry. There will be no change in the annual license fee. The purpose of the change is in response to requests from dog owners who have said it would be more convenient to even out, and to even out the workflow in the city clerk's office, associate it with dog licenses. Refunds of the second or third-year license would be made to any dog owner whose dogs have been relinquished or are deceased prior to the start of the second or the third-year term. I ask your consideration for this, this change to our legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Petey Vorus.
I'm Petey Vorus, and I live in the city. I just received some information I was looking for from Mr. Thorne. I was going to bring this up because what happens if the dog dies, deceases, before the period of licensing expires? Will the warden be required to examine the body, issue a death certificate in order to get a refund? Because if you're charging for licensing of an animal that does not exist, that's representation, that's taxation without representation. And I think we have a little too much of that around here. I'm very upset about it. I've called the police, I don't know how many times. I saw people exchanging packets of drugs and exchanging money, called the cops, they didn't come. I saw people stealing food commodities, called the police, three to four times, they never came. And so, I'm paying taxes, and I'm not getting representation. And I just want you to know this, that if they aren't going to respond to my calls, I am going to try to get a gun permit, because I think they've given me a message that I need to take care of myself. And, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare this portion of the meeting closed. Move on to approval of the minutes for May 23rd, 2016, approved by Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Palomini. All those in favor, aye. If the clerk would please read communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, June 13th, 2016. Under official there are none, under general there are none, under petitions there are none.
Okay. We'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Kozier?
Thank you, Madam President. Just as the resolutions were read this evening, we have many sales going on, and of those sales, almost every one is for vacant lots, which again, the city is trying to move right now, our vacant properties and vacant lots. So, 949 State Street, 455 Hewlett, 807 Craig, 38 Wiley, 509 Schenectady Street, 242 Division Street, 921 Stanley, 1543 Foster, and 123 Hague Avenue are all vacant lots, not buildable. And we appreciate Jackie Mencini's effort to move in these properties onto, for the most part, the neighbors right next door, who are going to be looking to really make some improvements in that area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. I'd like to announce that the, excuse me, hold on, all right, that through the woodlawn, there was a grant from the Carlilian Foundation that went through the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association for the purpose of renovating the dog park in Central Park. So, the Carlilian Foundation gave $15,400 towards that project. So, the group is really excited, the ones that have been working on the dog park are really excited to start these renovations. So, you should see some things start to happen right away, and so, congratulations to them, and to all the dog lovers, we're going to have a much nicer dog park there in Central Park. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Okay. We'll move on to the privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have two people signed up to speak. The first is Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Fortem, two items. One is the waste treatment plant, the bond. This is one of the reasons what we should have had was a service benefit agreement with the Mohawk Harbor project. We're being stuck with a $24 million bond, the taxpayers. Why? There should be no reason for it. The reason why we have to upgrade it is because of the increased services and the increased flow that's happening because of the Mohawk project. So, I mean, you know, this is another one, reason why we should have done a benefit service agreement on this issue. The second one is the motorium on the taxicabs. Sorry I wasn't here two weeks ago, but on the motorium on the taxicabs, we're also trying to fight for accessibility in taxicabs. Some of the things that, within the taxicab, I'm hoping the City Council, like some of the medallions for the taxicabs, would relinquish the medallion cost. So, that way, because it will help offset the accessible taxicab. It's almost nearly almost 56 to almost $10,000 extra to put a ramp inside the taxicab. And to, a normal taxicab would cost you somewhere around $30,000, and accessible would cost you around $50,000. I can get you more numbers, because those numbers are available through New York City and everything else. But if there's some way we can be able to offset and make sure that we can be able to help the taxicab owners, also within the last two to three weeks, and council can be able to get it, to where the Star Transit or the Advantage, which is the paratransit for the disabled. They had a driver who had a conviction of two felonies, and assaulted one of the disabled passengers on the way to the doctor's office. There's got to be some way that the City Council can turn around, and when they pulled, when they actually did a full background check, he had a list of felonies longer than my arm. So, hopefully, there's something that the council could be able to draft up some kind of language to make sure the background checks are done. I mean, I try not to, because the news report was still, allegations were still made, nothing has been gone through the court system. So, I'm hoping that the council could be able to pull some of that out, so that we can actually figure out what actually transpired. But we need to be able to protect the people. The other piece that we're having problems with is having more than one, the taxicabs picking up more than one passenger. This is one classic example. You don't know who that other passenger is that you're picking up. It's a safety issue. So, I mean, and on top of it all, why should a disabled person have to be traveled all over the greens acres in order to get to their doctor's appointment? So, I'm just hoping some of these things that we can work out, and I'm willing to work with the City Council on this issue to be able to help strengthen this, and I think the medallions, the way you're going, is a good way to do it, because we should be hiring our own people and not having people coming outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Petey Vorus.
First of all, there are too many things on the agenda this evening. The second thing, according to the public meeting laws, I don't think you can add anything to the agenda at the last minute. We must have some prior notes, especially when it comes to changing the wording on a resolution. Resolution five regarding the budget, I see that the police budget enumerates every activity that they're receiving money for, and I'd like to see the Section 8 Housing Department do the same, because many, several of their recipients are not in public housing anymore. They put them in private housing. They have put two in the building I am in, couple of years ago. One of them intentionally set fire to her exterior door using fire fluid and a Vic lighter, and I tried to get out of my room, just because I heard it all going on, heard the smell and everything, and somebody held my door closed at the knob, and I couldn't open my door. I was never questioned by the fire department, the landlord, or anybody about the incident. So, I'd like to know if the public incurred any expenses in regard to that. Next issue that I want, the J Street event for the gay pride. Please have the police there. I live on J Street, it's going to be very crowded. This is a very well-attended affair. I was at the park, Central Park Memorial Day, there were several thousand people there. Somebody went viral on the public address system. It wasn't nice, and there wasn't a cop there, no car, no, nothing, no security was present, visibly present. Resolution appointing the mayor's civilian review board. I'm looking for the letterhead to change a little bit there. I think at least one person should be removed from that letterhead. I think I've said everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that I have no one else signed up to speak, I will declare this portion of the meeting closed. And I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Motion by Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Palomini. All those in favor, aye. And we'll move to privilege of the floor regarding general city business. I have nine people signed up this evening, and the first is Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Fortem, with the tragic shooting would have happened, a lot of the press starts going and attacking the mental illness community. That's the only way that people know how to characterize it, but this person was not mentally ill. The mentally ill are defined by DSM four, and they have a specific thing. And I just, I mean, I'm hoping that the backlash towards the mentally ill doesn't come towards that direction. And I just, we've got to stop and think that we just can't pin everything on the mental illness community for an action of somebody who had no common sense whatsoever. The second piece is, there was a movie that's coming out, it's already been out, and a lot of the disabled are protesting it. It's Me Before You Die In. And the movie portrays a person who has an accident and is put into a wheelchair, has a small romance, and at the end, the person thinks because he is disabled, he's not worth anything, and then he commits suicide. This is another problem we've got within a disabled community. Every individual with a disability has a right to live. California just became the fifth state in the Union to legalize assistive suicide, which means you can go to any doctor, say, "I'm disabled, I want to commit suicide," and the doctor will give you drugs. Again, this is another problem we've got. And then tonight, Lisa Prazo just notified us, somebody else within a civil rights agenda felt that their type of discrimination wasn't worth living either. All I ask is get help, call somebody. Because your life is meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you. Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Commissioner slash Mayor, City Council. On June 25th, there's the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association Black Party, and we look forward to seeing everyone there, and we'll be having a very good time. So, the invitation is out. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine McDonald.
Hi, Madam President, my name is Elaine McDonald. Last month, a young police officer was charged with misdemeanor. The officer was suspended for 30 days without pay until his case was decided. Keeping with that precedent, I believe Mayor McCarthy should be treated in the same manner. He should be suspended without pay until the special prosecutor decides his guilt or innocence, and you be made inter-mayor until such time. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Benome.
Tony Benome Bellevue, a week or two ago in the paper, there was a story that the city has to pay the school districts of Schenectady $5.4 million for the taxes that weren't paid to them. The city by law has to pay it. And I'm wondering, when the school gets that money, do they give it back to us? Is there a way that they give it back to us? And secondly, I'd like to know how much it costs each taxpayer for that $5.4 million, and is it in the budget that they foresee this amount of money? I'd like to know that. And at a Bellevue meeting Thursday night, the city engineer was there, and about that Oak Street Bridge, keep hearing the railroad, the railroad, he says it is the railroad. And I was told that, by the mayor, right here, that the bridge would be complete by January 2017, but the way the engineer talked, they have August, they've got a meeting, and if they pass that, then they will start. So, we're not going to get the bridge built this year, if anyone wants to know. And the city engineer also said that Broadway is going to be paved from 890 up to Fourth Avenue. Now, with the problem that we have with the safety of the fire department getting up Broadway, is there going to be a conflict of safety with this? Is someone going to look into this and see if, that they're going to be able to get up Broadway, because they're having a heck of a time now? What's going to happen when they start paving? Thank you.
Thank you. Petey Vorus.
Experienced and key role player in all facets of housing, community, and economic development, including state economic development incentives, industrial development association, local development corporation, capital district business growth, federal funding incentives, a founding member of Metroplex's Authorities Construction Coordination Group. This is Steve Strickman, he just left city employment this week. Today was his first day working in the capital district for somebody else. How did this happen? He also will run a 5K and a 10K whenever you need him, and love it. Well, he's gone, and so, the mayor's not replacing him. And so, until possibly January. So, I think somebody should do a real thorough search for a replacement for Mr. Strickman, and I also hope that this body would consider returning to a city administrator, former government. The world's too big. Schenectady is getting bigger with it, as Mr. Lewis at Metroplex says, if we're really going to be a really cool city, we've got to start doing really cool things. And so, that scares me just a little. And so that scares me just a little bit, and this overplayed theatrical district, and I live right in the heart of it. So seriously, we need to consider getting back to an administrative form of government here. Also, somebody else left, a young lady from Detroit left, the Integrated Technologies Division over on State Street as part of a program with the other, with the capital district communities Saratoga, Rensselaer, and Albany. She was here for two and a half years. She says she only had planned on staying for two years, so we had her for two and a half years. But don't be worried, in order to get this program off the ground, it takes five years. Why didn't somebody hire somebody who had planned on being here five years? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Art Collins, I live on Bourbon Boulevard. About a month ago, I was walking my dog down Eastern Avenue near Prospect Street, and we got attacked by another dog. And it was basically, these young girls were walking a dog that they could not handle, it was too powerful for them. And when their dog saw my dog, it took off, and they couldn't control it. So, in the process, I got knocked over, my pants got ripped, and my knee got bloodied and bent fingernails and stuff, things like that, minor injuries. So I went home and I called the police, and I wanted to report it because, not that I want, you know, anything to happen to the dog or anything like that, but I figured that I should because this may happen to somebody else that, you know, may not be as lucky as I was. So, the police eventually came, and the person that took the report, I could tell right away he was really not interested in what I had to say. And basically, what he told me is, he says, "Well, I guess what you're going to have to do is you're going to have to walk your dog somewhere else, you know, down some other street." And that got me a little upset, you know, I've lived in Schenectady for over 70 years, and this is the first time I was told that, you know, maybe you shouldn't walk down this street. So, I told the policeman, I said, "Well, maybe I should, maybe I should carry a big stick with me." And he made sure that that was in the report. So, but so anyways, long story short, I got in touch with animal control. Animal control had a hard time finding out who the owner was. They found out who the owner was, they went over, they interviewed the owner, the owner gave some other scenario of what happened, okay? So I, they, she called me back and said, "Well, I can't do anything because they have a different thing than what you said." I said, "Well, there's a pole camera right on the corner of Prospect Street and Eastern Avenue." I said, "All you gotta do is look up the footage for May 15th between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock, and you'll see exactly what happened." So she says, "Well, I can't," the animal control officer says, "Well, I can't do it, I'm a civilian." They won't, so I made out, I made out a FOIL request, and I was surprised to find out that it's the District Attorney's Office that determines on who gets to see this footage, and obviously it wasn't me. Because they, first of all, they said that the cameras are not under the FOIL Act, and therefore, you know, they denied it. And so, there was one last thing, and that was to appeal it to the county manager. So I wrote a nice little letter to the county manager saying, "I don't want to even," you know, they, they came up with the, the reasons why they could not give me the footage is because they didn't want anybody to know the camera location, which everybody knew, you know, where it was. They didn't want to know the, the direction of the viewage, whatever you want to call it.
I'm so sorry, but I do need to ask you to summarize.
Okay. In summary, nothing was done, not even a, not even a rec man letter to the, to the owner of the, of the dog. And so therefore, the only, the only solution was find another street to walk down.
Okay. Thank you. I think it would be good if you would stay till the end of the meeting, so we could talk about that more.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burnett, Madam President, Counsel. Glad to speak on my take on the situation the mayor found himself in. I'd just like to say, a few Saturdays ago, it was nice to see the public out, the art fest for the kids. Now, I'd like to talk about my take on the situation the mayor found himself in, was basically this. In any situation or problem that we come across, there's two ways to handle it, a right way and a wrong way. And from what I gather, the situation in the mayor was that you saw someone suspicious in the neighborhood, unlike a threat somebody did about, about the situation on the news, a generalized threat to the public, that if you see somebody suspicious in the neighborhood, you pick up the phone, call 911, let the cops see what it, no questions asked whatsoever. Mayor didn't do that. So I'm not blaming the mayor, I'm not blaming the victim, there's no blame, because your council is still trying to figure out what, you know, what to do, legalize, and I give credit to Mr. Ricky for saying someone outside, Saratoga DA, I'm glad that happened. Now, he chased, the mayor chased this individual. I listened to nine, under nine and a half minute audio tape of the 911 call, which I believe the council should be listened to, in the situation. The reason why the mayor, the reason why the police didn't show up at the thing is because Mr. Burnett, the mayor, and the bad apples on the police force are on cohorts with each other, trying to sweep under the rug, now let the public know. When this is a personal, not private matter, this is a personal matter, because this public, this governing council, and the mayor needs to realize, it's we the people, not the Democratic Party, not the Republican Party, not businesses, not corporations, we, the public, elected you people and the positions you're in. And we the people demand that the mayor tell the truth, step down or resign. And Mr. Burnett, while I was watching what the council was saying on the 11 o'clock news subpoenas, okay, mayor ain't going to answer this subpoena because you're Democrat, Democrat party's pulling a string. And the fact that, I'm glad the Saratoga DA's looking into the matter. Now Burnett, one of the council meetings, that the council said, the executive council, you said on media
You need to address me.
that there was officers involved, and you want to say their names? Say their names. How the heck are this council supposed to do investigation if you're not going to release the names of the officers? Start waking up, start doing your call because we the people are fed up. We demand answers. We demand to be informed of the matter of the police. We elected people in the positions you're in. Not Democrat Party, not businesses, not Republican Party, we the people, we the people demand answers. We demand to be informed of this matter. Because any elected official within this thing, or anybody, no questions asked, arrested, jailed, went to the judge. Nobody, nobody.
Please summarize.
Even the mayor is not above the law.
Thank you.
We the people.
Good evening to the model citizens who runs Schenectady. On May 9th, an American citizen was arrested right here where I stand because he used profanity in this chamber. The council president had announced that such language would not be tolerated during these proceedings, and she wanted respect. Her announcement was ignored. Two policemen walked in here with handcuffs, cuffed the speaker, and led him away. The cameraman turned off the camera, and the Gazette reporter never wrote the story. Consequently, the incident is lost to history. Recently, another American citizen had a run-in with the mayor. She said she smelled liquor on his breath. She said he appeared intoxicated. She said he was driving a truck and flashing high beams in her face, and he frightened her wits, the wits out of her in the middle of the night. In that case, the council president wanted more options. Currently, America is involved in a presidential campaign. The designated nominee has been known to call people liars, sleazy, low-energy bunnies, and claims the system is rigged. Is he not mimicking society? Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting members of the council, council president, Mr. Porton. I believe the last time I came before you, I spoke about affirmative action, and I spoke to you about how I believed it was a good thing. I still believe it's a good thing, and many of you stood at disbelief thinking, a conservative Democrat thinking affirmative action being a good thing. Well, it is a good thing, because equality is an excellent thing. And what happened the other day, with the useless killing in Orlando, being so senseless, was just horrific. But equality across the board, as to how we see it, be it in a gay nightclub, or if it was in 2000, or if it was in Fort Hood, Texas, no matter where it is, it's just like I was talking affirmative action. It doesn't matter who you are, or where you are, or what you are, or your gender, it's all the same. We've got to open our eyes over this problem. Okay? This problem is systemic. These people have been shooting and killing us, it doesn't matter if you are gay, I'm telling you, we've seen them chop off heads of Christians. They do not like the Jewish faith. Let's be forward about this. I can say one thing about people who are gay and transgender, if I said that correctly, they know how to lobby, they know how to put things together correctly. However, this is a war on America, and people who do not want to believe that are closing their eyes. Now, any Democrat who's ever stepped in my household will see a silver star, a bronze star, they will see my father got a marksmanship, my family knows war, okay? We are at war. And if you do not want to believe this is a terrorist act that was taken out on gay people, you are totally miscapaculated, if I said that correctly, okay? But the point here is, we have got to see this for what it is, because you know what, it's going to be, it's going to be a Catholic church one day, it's going to be a synagogue another day, and then we're going to wake up, and we're going to say, you know what, this is terrorism. So maybe we could learn from friends that are gay, how to lobby. Maybe we could learn how to put this together, because this is more than what it is. It is something big for just not Schenectady, not New York, but for our country. And I sure hope they introduce this into our presidential race instead of just sidestepping things and looking at things in a different color.
I do need to summarize, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed, and I will move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Kosher.
Thank you. And just a few announcements here. Regarding the question with the dog license, there will be a reversion for any owner who says that animal is deceased.
Or if they move from the city of Schenectady, so that is in the legislation that we're looking to propose, and apologies if she had missed that. Believe it or not, the pools are going to be open soon. Graduation's coming up on the 25th, and at our next council meeting, which is the 27th, our Schenectady City Pools will be open. I will have some schedules downstairs at City Hall, and I'll also give them to our web, webmaster, so hopefully they can put them up on our website. But again, they open, the Central Park Pool opens on Monday, the 27th through Saturday, August the 27th, and then the remaining three pools, Hillhurst, Quackin' Bush, and Front Street, will open on Saturday, July 2nd. All the pools will be closed with the, on July 4th, with the exception of Central Park. So on that holiday, Monday, July 4th, the only pool that will be open will be the Central Park facility. And again, I will make sure we have copies downstairs, and we'll try to get it posted to our website. And of course, with that, our wonderful friends at Sickum, the free lunch sites will be out, and actually, we're calling them meals this, this year, because they are going to be doing breakfast as well. And those, I made some copies to put downstairs, and I'll be sure that we get them posted on the city website as well. But new this year again, they're going to have five sites for breakfast, and they're going to be at Ellis Hospital, Jerry Burrell Park, Steymitz Park, Wallingford Park, and Yates Village. So that's going to be brand new, and of course, we have 42 other sites throughout the city of Schenectady. So again, thank you to the Sickum folks over there. And if you're still interested in volunteering, I know some of us will be out there, I think we get requests all the time. The Schenectady Inner City Ministry, their direct line is 374-2683, and look for extension 108, and again, I'll try to make sure we get that on the website. And just the other night, I had the pleasure of presenting some senior wards at Schenectady High School. We did over 110 scholarships to individuals that attend Schenectady High, and we're very, very proud of them. And of course, congratulations to all our local graduates, both college and to high school, that'll be coming up, and some of already, the colleges have met. But I just want to read our top 10 students from Schenectady High School, and again, congratulate these individuals, and just listen to where they're attending. We have Shelby Pelletier, who's going to be attending SUNY Brockport, Le Dean Ram, who's going to Dartmouth College, Nicholas Snyder, University of Pennsylvania, Francisco Steck, Brown University, Rachel Muir, Dartmouth College, Ethan Kranich, RPI, alma mater of Mr. Falamene. My neighbor right across the street, Colin Vandemark, is going to Rochester Institute of Technology. Andrew Dietrich is enrolling into United States Military Academy at West Point. Shaqib Khan is going to RPI as well. And the number one student this year in the ranking is our former city council president and current city court judge, Mark Blanchfield. His son, James Blanchfield, is the number one student academic, and believe it or not, he's going to be following his dad's footsteps, I believe, he's going to Harvard University. So again, congratulations to all our graduates local, and have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council business, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. First of all, on the 22nd of June, at, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., there'll be the Community Needs Assessment Capstone presentation, which will be held at GE Theater at Proctor's. What this is about is that Schenectady was, is one of only six communities in New York State that was selected by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to participate in a community needs initiative. What has happened up to this point, there have been three, three sessions that were held, where people came together and had roundtable discussions that were facilitated by local leaders around housing, infrastructure, public safety, community capacity, population, education, and workforce, economy, and employment. And this capstone is to bring together all the information that came out of these sessions, and also to solicit questions and suggestions from the greater community. And then following that, there'll be a community survey that's going to be solicited, soliciting more participation from the public. This is free and open to the public, and it's really important that people participate, because the result- because, um, the result of it is, the purpose of the process is so that, uh, to identify the unique needs of Schenectady, and to develop a short-term, two-year, two-year action plan. So people have to give voice to what they feel that the needs are of the community. This is really a prime opportunity to do that, uh, so that we can make sure that the things that the community residents feel are important, are things that are addressed, and not just, um, everything coming necessarily through, through the administration here at the city. We're asking city residents to participate, to bring their concerns to the table, to bring their ideas to the table, because I, um, and having been part of these discussions, meeting a lot of people who have some really fabulous ideas on, and things that we can do here in the city. So again, it's at, um, Proctor's Theater on Wednesday, June 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So everyone, please come out. Um, during the week of June 25th, Schenectady is going to be hosting over 400 high school students from around the country. They're going to be volunteering, volunteering their time to do small business home repair projects for over 70 senior citizens as part of a group missions trip. Uh, two years ago, Schenectady benefited from the same group, um, and so they'll be back again, and we'll be hosting them. Now, if you want to help out, uh, they're, they're looking for donations for people to do baked goods, ice cream, pizza, basically to feed them. Um, they have a list of things, uh, water, lemonade, um, so just to make the kids feel appreciated. And if you're interested in participating, you can contact Linda Sweet in the mayor's office, and that number's 382-5000, and, um, get those contributions to her. So we just want to thank you in advance for those folks who will be participating and assisting with that. Lastly, I just want to mention the youth summit, which took place on May 25th at Proctor's Theater, that was really hosted by the, um, Schenectady Foundation, but a number of people in the community participated in organizing that. And, uh, there were over 400 people that were in attendance, we had various workshops. And I think one of the best things that came out of it was, we really heard what the youth are thinking, and what their concerns are about the community. And sometimes I think as adults, we may have a tendency to kind of overlook that voice. I have to tell you, they came to the table with some very powerful things that they had to say, and you'd be surprised at the, some really wonderful suggestions that they had. So this is, we're continuing with this, we had a meeting this morning to debrief, uh, the youth summit, and also to talk about how we're going to move forward to continue to engage the youth in our community. Uh, because the fact of the matter is, we really, it's our responsibility to help them develop into the leadership roles, and to take leadership roles within our community. So you will be hearing more of that. Uh, we don't want to wait for another year and then do another summit, because young people for a year is like a lifetime. So we, uh, have plans of doing some things in between them, making sure that we engage our youth, and taking their ideas, and helping them to bring those ideas to fruition. So I'll be bringing, uh, forward more information about that as we move forward. Thanks to everyone that participated in that. Thank you to the Schenectady Foundation for, um, hosting and bringing everyone together. Thank you.
Mr. Palamene.
So recently, the council has passed legislation regarding, uh, building permits, giving people the opportunity between June 15th and August 1st to receive a building permit without having to pay for the fee towards that. I received information today that Marty's Hardware, as well as Phillips Hardware, are offering discounts for people that are producing building permits purchased between that date, um, and you can get a discount as long as you show it at the, uh, store. And you have, and just a reminder, you have six months to complete the work, and in conjunction with that, we also have the value-added, uh, project that you get the tax, um, abatement, if you will, uh, if you fix up your home, in conjunction with that. So some neighborhood revitalization, home revitalization projects, along with the group cares that Ms. Porterfield spoke about earlier. Um, and we're going to continue the push for neighborhood revitalization as a council. It's very important to all of us, and, uh, next month, we'll be introducing, uh, some legislation for, uh, zombie properties, and how we can use that as a tool to really help neighborhoods out. Uh, it is a problem in the city, as well as communities, or throughout New York State, and it's something that, uh, I know Mr. Falatiko's office is very serious about, and, uh, we're going to tackle these issues as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggy? It's a full house tonight.
Well, it's a small council. Thank you, Madam President. With the neighborhood issues that we have going on, for, with the good weather, which we wouldn't know the last three or four days, we think it's fall, but the other problems are popping up with parties, outside parties, and loud music, which I've received calls about. Fireworks are starting early this year, and we had to deal with that last year. So I just want to remind everyone in their neighborhoods, it's nice to have a good time outside, and to have fun, and to enjoy the nice weather, but you have to be respectful of your neighbors, that's all. Think of your neighbors, if you may be bothering them, if you don't invite them to your party, which is not a bad idea. But just think, at a reasonable time, to turn the music down, turn the bass response down a little bit, because quite honestly, inside the house, I don't think you realize it outside, but bass response comes through everything. Even if you can't hear the music, you can hear the bass, that's for sure, because it vibrates everything. And we have, uh, you know, a fairly elderly community in, in many of our neighborhoods, and they sleep early, and they like their peace and quiet. So I just want to remind everyone to just be thoughtful of your neighbors, and I hope this year that the fireworks, even though they're illegal, they're at a reasonable rate, not like last year, and still going off at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. Uh, it's something we have to address, if we want to make this a livable city, and a, a place where people can enjoy the peace and quiet and of a beautiful summer. So I just want to again, remind people, be thoughtful of your neighbor, we're talking about this today, with the rally we had downstairs, that everybody has rights, well, think of that, everybody does have rights, and they have, also have a right to live in peace and quiet, in a reasonable way. I'm not saying people shouldn't enjoy themselves or have parties, but again, think of your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Mayor Parker has come to me in Texas for a three-day, uh, large, three-day meeting concerning smart cities. And, um, as he has said before, he's helping put Schenectady on the map, but this is pretty heavy duty down there with private corporations, other government entities. I'm sure he'll be providing, uh, the council with a report upon his return, which will be late Wednesday evening. Uh, just as a matter of housekeeping, the matter of Donald Birch Jr., what wasn't said here at the microphone tonight, was that prior to coming into this meeting, I sat outside with two police officers, and I personally told Donald Birch Jr., "You go in there and say what you have to say, no cursing, no swearing, no disorderly conduct." He said to me, "Fine." And what did he do? He came right in here. Disorderly conduct includes cursing in public, swearing in public, raising your voice, harassing other people. So he got arrested, but I warned him before he came in here. So before you feel too sorry for Donald Birch Jr., I don't know what to tell you. I gave him the best fatherly advice I could, and he didn't listen, so he got locked up. Regarding the individual here who spoke tonight, and I'm not going to let this go, if somebody comes in here in this public meeting, which is taped, recorded, and televised, who challenges my integrity, I, as part of we, the people, will in fact invoke my rights to pursue litigation for anybody bringing any kind of negative, um, spin on my reputation, my responsibility, and, and that reflects on my family as well, they shouldn't have to put up with that. You can't yell fire in a theater, and you can't make false accusations here. Let the special prosecutor do the case. That should be going imminently. That's where everybody's going to have to, under oath, state what happened, me included. You may be surprised. So let's just withhold judgment until the special prosecutor does what they have to do. In the, the final item tonight is, around quarter after 5:00 this evening, detectives were engaged in a criminal investigation over at, uh, First and Sunset. And during the course of that investigation, an individual armed with a pistol, uh, challenged them, and when he was instructed to drop the gun, he failed to do so, and he was shot and killed. None of the police officers are hurt. Uh, the investigation obviously is very fresh. I'll be returning back to meet with the DA here shortly, but the DA was on the scene, the mayor's been advised, excuse me. That's part of it. Mayor's been advised, and, uh, you know, it's very early on in the investigation, but I am happy to report none of the police were hurt, shot, or otherwise endangered, uh, by this individual, but sadly, he is deceased. So more to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, just a couple of announcements. Farmers Market in Bellevue, in Fairview Park, it will be running every week from 3:30 to 6:30 on Thursdays. Uh, they have a couple of fresh produce vendors, I know they would appreciate everyone's support. Our Hometown Heroes banners are up, and there was a wonderful ceremony held by DSIC to unveil the first 26 banners, and if you're interested in touring the banners and learning more about some of our hometown heroes, um, you can download the map at downtownschenectady.org, downtownschenectady.org. Give Graffiti the Brush kicked off on June 4th, and our teams covered tags on off-ramps, underpasses, and several properties, and of course, there'll be more to come there. And Habitat for Humanity broke ground on its 50th home last week, so here's to 50 more, because it's a wonderful pro, program that makes houses into homes, um, and, and gives some very deserving people the opportunity to become first-time homeowners. Lastly, I want to thank our city engineer, Chris, Chris Wallen, uh, I think he does a lot of work behind the scenes, um, but he works very, very hard and diligently at getting funding for our paving, because the city simply can't afford to do all the paving that's needed. Um, and most recently, he secured $1.5 million from CDTC funding, um, for paving Erie Boulevard from Union to the new roundabout, so anyone who travels that, that section daily or often will know, it, it really needs some work. He also received $1.2 million to receive and repave Broadway between Weaver and Fourth, and $3.8 million for replacing the King's Road Bridge. And that actually led me, before the Bellevue meeting, to look into the Oak Street Bridge and, and where that was in process. Um, and where that is, it's in the final design stages, it's been given to Amtrak, and we're waiting for a response from Amtrak. Um, and Amtrak doesn't feel any sense of urgency to respond at this time. Uh, but I thought that the Bellevue residents spoke loudly and clearly, and I thought they had very good input, and I will be putting it on the council agenda for Monday, um, to see if we can come up as a council with a resolution to send to our state and federal leaders, um, to make them aware, because to be honest, the Oak Street Bridge is one of hundreds of thousands in the country, uh, but to us, it's one of the very most important bridges, um, into our neighborhoods, and for the safety of our residents. So stay tuned for more on that. Um, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this very, very high and very, very low meeting. It was really, um, a roller coaster ride of motions this evening, so thank you all. Mr. Palamene moved, second by Ms. Porterfield. We are, all those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.